Okay, this is the April 21st, 2015 continuation hearing of Livingston County's zoning board appeals review of Livingston County's zoning case issue 714, Pleasant Bridge Energy, Los Angeles, Pleasant Bridge Energy Project. The floor calls now.
Here.
John Bismarck, Eric Richard Peeter, Diana Iverson, Howard Zimmerman.
Here.
Joe Huesman.
Here.
And Katie Nelson.
All right, we'll go ahead and start this evening off with a promise that the last individual's come up and go ahead and testify. I've got a list here, it looks like it started with 10 when I come in, and it looks like a little few out here. I've got eight individuals on the list, you know, some of you are in the audience, so we'll go ahead and work through that. Additionally, this evening, we're going to talk about some exhibits, we're going to try to get those put into record. There's a few other administrative tasks that we'll try to get through this evening. Our hope is to get through everyone that needs to testify this evening, so that we can start next week, 27th, 29th, into the next phase of the hearing, the rebuttal phase. We're working on, I guess the rules or the procedural elements of that rebuttal hearing, so that's something clear and concise for everyone to work from, with the expectation that we have some timelines on some of that, so that we can work through that expeditions. So with that first thing on my list...
Mr. Chairman, I don't mean to interrupt, but so that means there's no hearing Thursday, because my notes had a Thursday in them, so I just want to make sure what's clear.
That is correct. In light of, I believe, the county board had a, did not meet on last Thursday, they rescheduled for this Thursday, so that would make this space unavailable as well as several individuals that would be attending.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure I had the right schedule.
All right. First individual on the list, Mary Russell. Mary Russell, are you available this evening to speak? Please, not yet. Eight just went to seven. All right. Next individual, Kent Zimmerman. Kent Zimmerman, are you here this evening?
Yeah.
All right. All right, Mr. Zimmerman, do you wish to take a note for it for him?
For him.
All right. "You solemnly and sincerely declare in firm and testament, you shall give in this case now in hearing will be the truth and nothing but the truth, or that you suffer the pains and penalties of perjury." All right, may I begin?
Hey, uh, the name's Kent Zimmerman, I live in Royal Forest, at SS29, 997 East 1200 North Road. Uh, life, my sons, my daughter, we, if they'll free, we'd have two, uh, two thirty-three. They're home. Uh, my concerns, the, the more to consider, um, I'll be, some new, some not new, um, the noise does concern me. Um, I am concerned about that, what it'll do to calling my wife, my family's life. The view, do not care for the view, the existing farms I see around in the countryside, and the lifestyle. Um, property values is another issue. What's he gonna do to property values, uh, has affected some of our areas. That was a little concerning. As far as, uh, my farm, I'm a livestock farmer, dairy farmer, they allow a lot of livestock. I mean, they cause, I, I've tried to research some, there's just not, uh, there's not much out there on livestock, the effects that this might be to it. I'm concerned about regaining, what will be my feed efficiency, and just the overall health of my livestock. Any, any, as long as they're very touchy, uh, a lot of things might come off. If these things happen, and they cause this effect to them, who's, uh, who's liable for that? And who's gonna make that up? Uh, another concern I have on the whole project is the fact that they're federally subsidized, heavily, uh, this doesn't make sense to me, if they can't hold their own, why do you look at them? As far as the, uh, whole project, uh, as far as tax revenue, they may bring in more tax revenue to an extent, but feel it's long-term, people looking to maybe, how many of our communities are going to see the fact that when farms there, it's going to come a lot of people away, moving into our school district, or others, people, uh, are just paid per student, I feel we're going to lose money along the way there, business-wise, family-wise. Uh, another, I guess testimony I would add, I, I do have a brother-in-law that lives on a state, and was very close to it, when he died, on a curtain, and, uh, he, he had something that definitely has affected his life. It affects his sleep, and it affects him during the day. Uh, that's testimony he gave. So it, it just seems to me that there's so many unknowns, and there's so many, uh, things that could happen. I don't know, just, the whole thing reminds me a little bit, kind of Obamacare, or Nancy Pelosi Congress, what you say, we have to pass this to, uh, to CLO Center. Well, we don't have to do that. We don't need to make that decision. So, uh, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Zimmerman. Please, please, we're going to start, any questions of Mr. Zimmerman? Mr. Blazer, any questions? Mr. Luke Anz?
Uh, he's one of my clients.
All right, anybody in the audience with questions of Mr. Zimmerman? ZB A again? County staff, county council? Thank you, Mr. Zimmerman. Next on my list, Dieter Elber. Dieter Elber, are you available this evening to speak? All right, Mr. Elber, would you wish to take a note for me for him?
No, before.
All right. "You solemnly and sincerely declare in firm and testament, you shall give in this case now in hearing will be the truth and nothing but the truth, or that you suffer the pains and penalties of perjury."
So that's my, yes.
All right. Uh, please state your name and address for our court recorder, and then you can go ahead and begin.
Say, well, uh, my name is Dieter Elber, and, uh, I reside in my family at 10602 North 2900 East Road in Forest, Illinois. It's a little long when you repeat that, so thank you for your patience and time through the last several months. My name is Dieter Elber, and I reside in my family at 10602 North 2900 East Road in Forest, Illinois. My wife and I operate a small cattle company on 125 acres that we own in Pleasant Ridge, township. Operating a care for the cattle is my wife Rachel's full-time job. We also employ a part-time employee to help with the day-to-day operations. We currently have approximately 40 calves a year, and anticipate expanding to 52 to 56 calves a year when we're finished developing the facilities and patching. Our primary source of income on the farm is reducing show cattle, mostly simpulse show cattle, versus some prospera maine and other prospera cattle. We use the latest...
Mr. Mr. Elber, I don't mean to interrupt.
Yeah?
Can you slow down a little, because we're having a hard time keeping up, and I think she is as well, so...
Absolutely.
You're reading, and she's going crazy, so...
All right. So, "We use the latest reproductive genetics and techniques available, and continue to look for new ways to increase the conception rates and the quality of calves we produce. The number-one reproductive tool that we use is embryo transfer. Simply put, that is the practice of harvesting eggs from one cow and putting them into another cow. This allows us to produce multiple calves that have superior parents, and also allows us to utilize other horse genetics. There are multiple factors that have a successful DT program. Process starts with high-quality eggs and proper handling of those eggs, ensuring they contain nitrogen and handle as little as possible. The processing we spend the most time and money on is nutrition, and of course, the handling of the recipient calves. This is an area that we can manage and gives us the best return on our investment. Cows must be in good physical condition with proper levels of nutrition, supplemental minerals, and stress-free vitamins. To reduce stress in our recipient cowherd, we built a new farm on our property in 2014. Installed new shoes, sorting pens, new allotment tub, to work the cattle nature and with less stress than able facilities. We also use the farm's sore hay, so it has a higher nutritional value. We have seven new cattle pens. We installed new water and water troughs to allow for pressure supply of water. We also added feeding areas so that we can feed more cows without overcrowding, without making them fight for space at the feed barn. The cost for the new farm and equipment is slightly over $120,000. We still have another 20 to 30 million additional concrete, excavating, and toning costs, et cetera. Of the $120,000, approximately $55,000 was spent on local suppliers of cattle equipment, excavating, electric, plumbing, gravel, and concrete. All the additional work will be provided by local Livingston County businesses. Why do we spend the money on the farm? It's pretty simple, for one reason, right? To reduce the stress on the cattle and the operators. Stated shows stress in cattle has an negative effect on reproduction, at least the poor performance. Stress can occur in many ways. Fear, physical discomfort, right? Motivations, too hot, too cold, too wet, too dry. Pain, disease, injury, are handling stress, as well as their social structure stress, tracking issues, noise, bright lights, wind cycle. So why am I concerned about stress in cattle? Because noise, bright lights, and shadows cause stress in cattle, and that is exactly where the severity of those turbines within a half mile above our normal range is. I'm not an expert in noise or shadow detector, for all the reasons you've heard of in the last four months, that cause stress in people, also cause stress in our livestock. Our cattle live outside 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, 365 days a year. Believe it or not, they don't go inside, shut the door, they don't pull down the shades, and they just can't turn on the TV. Now, they will be exposed to the effects of the turbines all day, every single day. I'm concerned if we manage our cattle carefully, to put them in an environment to be successful, and that installing more turbines creates a major requirement, and this reduces our competitive edge and our ability to make money on our farm. We currently put in embryos for ourselves, and then some for our partners. Our strength as a partner is because we have access to high-quality nutrition, and mostly ideal conditions for breeding cattle and raising calves. When we can no longer achieve higher-than-normal conception rates, or experience higher portion rates because of stress in cattle, we're no longer a viable partner. I'm concerned that the current proposal not only reduces our current productivity, but also reduces our chance to expand our patchings in the future. We own 40 acres in a joint section, and the current proposal of all-star turbine next to our land, with no meaningful amount of setback. We have plans to build another farm in 2017 that would be used for additional stores and for housing of sheep cattle. This farm will bring in over 60,000 expenses paid to local suppliers. Livingston County has a very rich history of being a productive agricultural livestock area. In this project, we make decisions in our area unfavorable for livestock, and will cause us to refrain from investing more money in the future. I'm asking the members of the zoning board to deal, to protect us from the current turbine proposal. At the same time, we need to make a statement, that Livingston County is not for sale to corporations that don't have a vested interest in the residents of Livingston County in mind. It is not for this proposal to be done, and for everyone to put this behind them and to return to the main transmitters. Again, thank you for your time, Bill, just throw off this entire process. Do you want to talk about that? I would talk about that on April 24, 7, 365.
Two, eight seconds, at this point. Any questions? All right. Uh, local school districts, local government, any questions? Mr. Blazer? All right, it's your, Mr. Luke Anz, your client. Uh, anybody in the audience with some questions for Mr. Elber?
Nobody to speak to.
All right, uh, ZB A again, if you don't have any. County staff, county council? All right, thank you. Next on the list, John Fried. John Fried.
Mr. Chairman, I, we received a text just a few minutes ago from Mr. Fried's wife, and I think I mentioned after the last hearing, he went into surgery the day of the last hearing, uh, the first day he was called. Um, my understanding is that I would be receiving a ready statement, I will forward that to Mr. Blazer, and I would ask for leave to at least attempt to submit it next week. The board can do what we should, as can Mr. Blazer at that time, but at least, I would just ask for the opportunity to see what he says, submit it, and let the board make a ruling. Um, like I said, I think the first time he was called throughout this hearing process wasn't the last hearing, was at the last hearing or the hearing before, since he was seven, fourth under the last, so we would just ask for board's indulgence for Mr. Fried, um, who has been, who is, I think, recuperating from some serious surgery.
I think that's fair, Mr. Fried. All right. All right, uh, we'll take the, we'll take the letter, we'll consider it after you receive it, and we'll make a final ruling from that. Next on the list, John W. Rich. John W. Rich, are you available this evening? All right. Next on the list, George Bush. George Bush.
W.
Nope, not W, and spelled differently, B-U-S-C-H. George Bush, please give your name. "You solemnly swear a testament, you shall give in this case now in hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth." So, you got it?
Yes.
All right, please state your name and address for our court recorder, and then you can go ahead and begin.
Okay, my name is George Bush, and my address is 11349 North 2300 East Road, Fairbrook. I don't know whether this would qualify as testimony, but I do have some thoughts about this whole process. When it began, I remember a video being shown by the, I guess, the head operation fellow, and they, and the, the people were saying, hallelujah to this, and this is the greatest thing since sliced bread. And it occurred to me, as they were panning the hillsides and showing the video of all that, there wasn't a single residence in sight, in the whole video, there wasn't a single residence in sight. Then it came out, oh, this is in Montana. Well, Montana maybe has a population, the whole state, 500,000 people. The whole state, 500,000 people. So the density there is incredibly small compared to this. And people were telling it, and then it came across a couple meetings ago, a gentleman testified that, uh, you know, the nearest town is four miles away, so of course they love it, they didn't see it, they don't hear it, they don't sense it, they, they haven't disrupted it in any shape, way, or form or fashion. I just think this whole thing, by, uh, this company, uh, it just sticks to my head. Uh, they, they, they saw what they thought was easy pickings in Livingston County, they probably looked north to page kind, uh-uh, couldn't go there. Their prereqs and their, uh, barriers are, are what? Are, are too high, so they look at sort of a secondary Livingston County, and they thought that, my gosh, you know, they, they, they haven't touched their rules and regulations on this since '06, uh, they're lacking in many respects, uh, we'll just jingle some money in front of them and see what we can get going here. And that's where we find ourselves today. Uh, they jingle a lot, uh, in front of, who knows, 100 people, promising lots of money, okay? Not caring a damn about everybody else, the non-participants, the collateral damage of them. They didn't care, they still don't care. They're a good neighbor policy. Oh, if you live, uh, within a half-mile, we'll give you 12,000 or close to a year. For 40 years, they aren't going to be a business for 40 years. No. A young lady last meeting herself said, you know, what if they, you know, they claim bankruptcy? Yeah, deals one. All responsibility deals one. With the word bankruptcy, okay. The fact that we have government money, actually, your money, my money, to fight us, is really a crazy thought. Uh, it's just one bad thing after another. I've got seven of them, look at that. Three in front, four behind, all within, all within a mile. Uh, they are monstrosities, no two ways about it, they are just big monstrosities. And for this company, like the federal government, big brother, trying to jam their way down our throats, and telling us what's good for us, like we're a bunch of vocal yokels, is frankly, uh, a little too much to handle. And I think they came in with that idea, we're going to slip again, no problem, you know, we'll talk about, you know, the sound, the flicker, this and that, but the view, the, the drop and drop, property value. Who wants that? Who has that? There's people here that probably are hoping this goes through. There's people here hoping and praying that, oh my gosh, I hope this goes through, I've already budgeted a big combine or something for my four turbines or five turbines on my property. And maybe that's why, since '06, the standards on this by the Livingston County Board was never approached, was never touched. Maybe somebody on the board itself said, uh-uh, uh-uh, don't rock the boat, don't rock the boat, we want, I want this way. Again, not thinking a damn about anybody else but themselves, just greed, pure playing simple. Greed. Collateral aggression. All someone can do is create enemies. Former neighbors are going to become enemies, no two ways about it. No two ways about it. And they're going to be reminded 24/7, every time they see that damn thing in front of them. I think that's all I've got to say.
Mr. Bush, I'm vaguely familiar with Fairberry, but I don't know where you live. Are you a farmer? What's your farm style like?
I have a five-acre parcel, and I live on the north rural side of things. I have a pig operation, horse ranch, I have a horse operation to the side of me, and they are wonderful neighbors. Uh, the pig operation, I don't know if it's my neighbor, or if it's his dad, or a trust of some picture that wants these damn things, but I know, I know if they love, it's not going to be neighborly anymore.
How long have you lived there?
Uh, eight years.
What caused you to move out into the country?
Oh, you should ask. Where we lived was becoming very, very congested, very cruddy. I don't know if you know Orland Park area, Joey, they're just crazy, and my wife wanted out. So she took a compass, stuck it on a map, and started making circles. And we looked for property, affordable property, and didn't see any, didn't find any, didn't find any, and then finally, this little town called Fairberry popped up on the radar. And I did a little research on water, good waters, short, small wells, uh, and, uh, that's what we put in our stake.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else on board with questions? All right. Local school districts, local government? Mr. Blazer?
Yes, sir.
Any questions? Mr. Luke Anz?
Yes, sir. All right. Mr. Bush, a couple questions. Um, do you mind if I ask what you do for a living?
I am an associate at the Walmart in Palm Springs, after being a teacher for 10 years.
Okay, great. And what building, you said you have five acres, how many, how many buildings are under five acres?
Just a house on a very small share.
And what's in the share?
Uh, tractor, four-wheeler, tools, yard, uh, orientation things.
So yard equipment kind of stuff, then? ATV, nothing for commercial operation?
Oh, absolutely.
Just to kind of, your own grass, et cetera?
Oh, yes.
Nothing for, thank you, Mr. Bush, appreciate it.
Anybody in the audience with questions for Mr. Bush? Anybody out there? Okay.
You've got kids in the presental school district?
Yes.
Okay. They're Parker Spencer?
Yes.
Okay. And they, you've been here eight years?
Actually, last question you said, you have kids in the little district, yes, and you said...
Uh, Parker Spencer. He's, uh, so they've been here for eight years? They've been in this school district eight years, or you weren't? You moved directly from Long Park? Gotcha, thanks.
ZB A, anybody else with questions? County staff, county council, anything? All right, thank you, Mr. Bush. Thank you. Next on my list, Terry Coe, Terry Coe, C-O-E. All righty. Next on the list, Warren Gillette. Warren Gillette. Gillette, all right. Short of the letter from Mr. Fried, we went through everybody on the list, uh, I did make it pretty clear last meeting, so, um, I will consider this their final call, so they have, if they have not testified previously, they have forfeited that opportunity, so, um, with that, I guess we'll, we'll move into some administrative tasks that we need to do this evening, as far as evidence, we're going to work through several exhibits, um, so, yeah, we'll just go ahead and start with that, and we'll try to finish up everything administratively that we need to tonight, so, um, yeah. All right, the county accepts New House Exhibit 1 as early detection and wind turbine O and M, three simple images. The county accepts New House 2 as goodbye cranes, hello climbing GE, integrates, rolling, turbine repairs. County accepts New House Exhibit 3 as estimated cost of decommissioning. The county accepts Exhibit New House Number 4 as turbine maintenance pay now or shared pay later. County accepts UCLC Exhibit 104 as a Google Earth map image of 24370 East, 500 North Road. I'm going to assume that's Fairberry. County accepts UCLC Exhibit 103 as a village, August 14, 2014 meeting agenda. County accepts Bell Exhibit 1 as a, uh, scenic, uh, image of farm and adjacent residence, 5x7 total. County accepts Bell Exhibit 2 as a, uh, flat map, uh, for highlighting, um, a small piece of property, deano... County accepts Bell Exhibit 3 as a letter from Armstrong Township High School, to Chairman Weinert from Williams C. Maltney. All right. The county does not accept Bell Exhibit 4 February 18, 2015. It's from Robert W. Rand, Rand Acoustics, noise reviewer, Pleasant Bridge, Green Energy Project. It's from Robert W. Rand, Rand Acoustics, noise reviewer, Pleasant Bridge Wind Energy Project. All right. We will redact transcript to disallow testimony from Whitney Bell, March ten, twenty fifteen. It appeared on pages twenty six, sixty seven, line twenty four, twenty six, sixty eight, line one, twenty... Uh, okay. Found on pages twenty six, sixty seven, twenty six, sixty eight, line one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty one, twenty two. On twenty six, sixty eight, again, line twenty three, twenty four, on pages twenty six, sixty nine, one through eleven. Strikers. We'll redact the transcript to not include those. All right, the county accepts ballot exhibit five as a result of an acoustic testing program. Kate Bridgewater Farm, prepared for energy, specific by Steve Cooper, the acoustic group. County accepts Boom Garden exhibit one as Illinois drainage law. County accepts Boom Garden exhibit two as mutually drainage tie lines protection. PowerPoint presentation presented by Mr. Boom Garden. County accepts Boom Garden exhibit three as a soil survey of Livingston County. County except Boom Garden, Boom Garden exhibit four as the Belbury Drainage District's letter of concern to Livingston County Government, which led to Invin Energy's response, Pleasant Bridge Exhibit one twenty five. The county accepts UCLC exhibit one twenty two as an aerial view, uh, Google Earth map of one three, one one three north, twenty five hundred east road. County accepts Gallitz exhibit number one, uh, Great Plains L E C D T. It's a letter, uh, to from Mr. Gallitz. County accepts Miller exhibit one as a pamphlet, come to Fairberry pamphlet. Rip by Rip Miller, from Rip Miller. County accepts UCLC exhibit one twenty six as the Smith Douglas sites, South Street or Illinois, um, fact sheet from the Illinois EPA. County accepts Johnston exhibit number one as turbines boosting governments bank account share. All right, the county accepts Pleasant Bridge exhibit three three four as the property of Laura Kerr. It's a Google Earth image again.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I just missed a number. I apologize. I just missed a number.
Uh, three thirty four, Pleasant Bridge exhibit three three four.
Thank you.
It's not, it's missing.
Okay.
There are, there are a couple that I missed that Mr. Blazer's gonna...
I'm not complaining. I'm just trying to make sure I keep up.
I'll certainly add your list tomorrow.
County accepts Pleasant Bridge exhibit one thirty two as correspondence between Mr. Ted Hartkey and Matthew Wingler, dated Monday, April fifteen, twenty thirteen. County accepts Pleasant Bridge exhibit two thirty one as correspondence between, again, Mr. Wingler, Mr. Hartkey dated April sixteen, twenty thirteen. County accepts Pleasant Bridge exhibit two thirty two as correspondence, again, between Matthew, Matthew Wingler and Mr. Hartkey dated April seventeen, twenty thirteen. County accepts Pleasant Bridge exhibit one thirty three correspondence between Matthew Wingler and Mr. Ted Hartkey, May sixth, twenty thirteen. County accepts Pleasant Bridge exhibit one thirty four, uh, again, as correspondence between Mr. Hartkey, Mr. Wingler, Jessica Hartkey dated May seventh, twenty thirteen. County accepts Pleasant Bridge exhibit one thirty five correspondence between Matthew Wingler and Sherry C. At Illini Home Improvement. Uh, that would be Sherry Carrick. That was dated June eleventh, twenty thirteen. But the county accepts Pleasant Bridge exhibit two thirty three as correspondence from Matthew Wingler to Mr. Hartkey dated May tenth, twenty thirteen. County accepts Pleasant Bridge exhibit one thirty seven correspondence dated July fifth, twenty thirteen, um, between Invin Energy and Schreier, O'Neil and Thompson. County accepts Pleasant Bridge exhibit one hundred and forty seven as correspondence between Mr. Hartkey. Appears to be several board members of his county. Dated May twenty third, twenty thirteen. County accepts Pleasant Bridge exhibit one forty eight as correspondence between John Drayer and Ted Hartkey dated June fifth, twenty thirteen. County accepts Pleasant Bridge exhibit two thirty five as the proposed site layout and land control summary for the California Ridge Wind Energy Project, highlighting Mr. Hartkey's residence. County accepts Pleasant Bridge exhibit one fifty two as correspondence between Mr. Blazer and Mr. Thompson dated July twelfth, twenty thirteen. County accepts Pleasant Bridge exhibit one fifty five correspondence between John Drayer and Mr. Hartkey. Along with several other individuals, looks like the county board list. Dated June sixteen, twenty thirteen. County accepts Pleasant Bridge exhibit one fifty seven as a letter from Hankard Environmental to Mr. Blazer dated December tenth, twenty thirteen. Summarizing, uh, California Wind Energy Center noise study today. County accepts Pleasant Bridge exhibit two thirty six as a letter from the Vermillion County State's Attorney dated October third to Mr. William C. Maltman Superintendent. County accepts Pleasant Bridge exhibit two thirty seven correspondence from Mr. Bill Donahue to David Halper. Mr. Donahue was involved with the State's Attorney's Office from the previous exhibit. County accepts Hartkey exhibit one. This is the Hartkey testimony presented at our, uh, here in the twenty fifth of March. Title Reliving Year Twenty Thirteen, Year Invin Energy's GE one point six megawatt wind turbines. County accepts Pleasant Bridge exhibit one thirty six as wind turbine meeting notes, May twenty eighth, twenty thirteen. Boone County zoning meeting from Mr. Ted Hartkey. County accepts Pleasant Bridge exhibit one thirty eight as correspondence between Mr. Blazer and Mr. Thompson again, dated Tuesday, March eighteenth.
Then there are certain exhibits that, that I have and they were handed out before, but Pleasant Bridge exhibits. But I don't think they were submitted or utilized. Can I mark those off or?
No, they're not on this.
Okay.
Just for the record, there were four that were admitted that I had left it to put on the list. I'll update the list tomorrow. Those were Pleasant Bridge Exhibits one fifty seven, two thirty two, two thirty three, and two thirty four. They're submitted and out placed.
Do you want these submitted so we know which one you're on? Or not?
That's up to you.
Okay. Let me just read these. These are exhibits that are not submitted. So if they're on somebody's list, you can, you can cross them off. Pleasant Bridge Exhibit one fifty three. Pleasant Bridge Exhibit one fifty eight. Pleasant Bridge Exhibit one seventy four. And Pleasant Bridge Exhibit two thirty.
Did we decide if those are going in the record? I assume they're not since you redacted testimony. At least those would be...
I didn't say that.
I understand that. I'm just making sure that Mr. Blaken, who's got the record, it's not in. Thanks.
All right, the county accepts Indian Grove Township one exhibit, a resolution of the Board of Trustees of Indian Grove Township, Livingston County, Illinois. All right, the county will accept Cook Exhibits one, which is picture of Cook's Cove Swans. The county accepts exhibit two as script for rehabilitation for Barbara Cook from St. James. John W. Aubrey Medical Center dated June first, two thousand and six. County accepts exhibit three as pictures of decent pasture. And the county accepts exhibit, exhibit four as picture of protest sign to turbines in Vermillion County. The county accepts Fair exhibit number five as the, uh, all the associated, the names and associated signature pages for their, um, submitted names. County accepts Fair exhibit four as Invin Energy Wind Turbine Contract Terminated, Your Online Newspaper for Southwestern Ontario. County accepts UCLC exhibit one thirty three as New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. It's a notice of violation to Mr. Mike Vessel, Stony Creek Energy LLC, dated April eighteen, twenty thirteen. County accepts UCLC exhibit number three as a hearing, um, a hearing between several individuals and Invin Energy LLC, heard in the State of New York Supreme Court, County of Wyoming. Complaint index number four six nine one two.
For the record, Mr. Chairman, it's a, it's a complaint. It's not a petition.
Complaint. All right. That is correct. A complaint. Again, uh, county accepts UCLC exhibit number four. It's a complaint, uh, between Richard and Karen Slawinski and Invin Energy LLC, again, State of New York Supreme Court, County of Wyoming. Appears to be complaint number four six zero six six.
Okay. In the record, on page three thousand two oh two, references made to UCLC exhibit number five, something to do with the local book. We have no such exhibit and I noticed Mr. Lukans on your list of exhibits, so there's no UCLC five.
Let me, if you don't mind, I'll check and...
Okay.
I, I might have been going off the transcript at the time, so let me see what I can find.
Okay.
I know what I, I remember what I did.
The county accepts UCLC exhibit seven as a, uh, a hearing heard between Daniel Bryan Williams and Invin Energy. It's a case heard at the United States District Court, District of Oregon, Pendleton Division, uh, dated fifth day of August, twenty thirteen.
For the record, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, if this also is a complaint about... Rightful defense, no reason to suggest public complaint, if you like this.
Plaintis complaint. Again, that is correct. Plaintis complaint nuisance trespass, permanent injunction. Demand for jury trial. County accepts UCLC exhibit eight, noise complaint generated from farm here, uh, April second, twenty ten, from the daily reporter dot com. All right, just to be certain, more clear on this, UCLC exhibit twenty eight, uh, it originally objected to. We ruled, we allowed it, um, and that's, uh, from the Public Service Commission of Wisconsin. It was a certified, uh, docket two five three five dash CE dash one hundred. That's PSC reference number one eight seven nine eight seven. County accepts exhibit four, zero zero zero, okay. Let me correct my statement. The county accepts exhibit zero 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 one as the Judith Gavlin Farm. It's a period of, or it's a, an article from the management division. No, it's not. It's from my team at that. All right. County accepts zero exhibit two as the agreement regarding easements. I believe it's also referenced as Pleasant Bridge Exhibit seven. County accepts zero exhibit three, uh, neighbor agreement, again, referenced as Invin Energy Exhibit six. County accepts zero exhibit four, uh, cooperation as a release agreement, again, Pleasant Bridge Exhibit eight. County accepts zero exhibit number five as the Time Magazine, uh, article, uh, The Power of Sleep. The county accepts zero exhibit number six as U.S. Energy Information Administration, EIA, independent statistics and analysis. County accepts zero exhibit seven as the renewable energy subsidies and electricity generation. County accepts 0 Exhibit 8 as the remarks given by ministers here at this hearing. For the record, that is 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. 6 separate staple attachments should all go with that in 0 Exhibit 8. County accepts 0 Exhibit 9 as the biotag of David G. Loom, Missinole State University, again, referenced as Pleasant Bridge Exhibit 114. County accepts UCLC Exhibit 42 as the U.S. Department of Energy's wind program management impressions. It's wind program accomplishments. County accepts UCLC Exhibit 43. It's from the Office of Energy Efficiency and Renewable Energy. It's about the DOE wind program. County accepts TriPoint Exhibit 1 as a letter to Livingston County Board members, Ag Zone Emergency Services Committee members, written by Minister Jeff Ryan, Superintendent TriPoint's rule. County accepts Tri, accepts TriPoint Exhibit 2 as the NGDWS Turbine Boosting Governments Bank of California, again, referenced as Pleasant Bridge Exhibit 123. County accepts Pleasant Bridge Exhibit 307 as meeting minutes from Prairie Central School District, March 19, 2015. County accepts Pleasant Bridge Exhibit 303 as the Prairie Central School District meeting minutes from January 15, 2015. County accepts Pleasant Bridge Exhibit 306 as Prairie Central School District meeting minutes, August 21, 2014. County accepts Pleasant Bridge Exhibit 185 as Prairie Central School District meeting minutes, September 18, 2014. County accepts Pleasant Bridge Exhibit 302 as Prairie Central School District, 2010, 2011 board rules. County accepts Pleasant Bridge Exhibit 183 as Prairie Central School District meeting minutes, October 16, 2014. County accepts Hoffman Exhibit number 1 as PowerPoint presentations, wind turbines, and Prairie Central School funding by Cheryl Hoffman. County accepts Dassal Exhibit 1 as wildlife concerns and land use PowerPoint presentation. County accepts Dassal Exhibit 2, economic importance of bats in agriculture. For those two previous exhibits, allowed to record indicate that's John Dassal, John Dassal. This is John Dassal Exhibit number 3, Judge Holt's Wind Farm or Bats, published in the New York Times. County accepts Hayes Exhibit 1, results of acoustic testing program, Cape Bridgewater Wind Farm. County accepts Hayes Exhibit 2, reviews of acoustic testing program at Cape Bridgewater Wind Farms. County accepts Hayes Exhibit number 3 as further comments on the Cape Bridgewater Wind Farm study, muddying the waters. Shomer, Mr. Paul Shomer appears in this dated 20 February, 2015. County accepts Hayes Exhibit number 4 as the investigations of the acoustic impact of the Pacific Hydroventures at Cape Bridgewater, Victoria, Australia. Participants, participating residents' statement, 21st January, 2015. County accepts Hayes Exhibit number 5 as evidence-based design meets evidence-based medicine. Sounds leap-step. County accepts Hayes Exhibit number 6, reasons to vote no, like John Hayes, a person whose family and friends would be affected by the proposed wind. County accepts Hayes 7, noisy hospital affect patient rest and health. In the WJLA.com article from 314.5, no, excuse me, June 11, 2014.
Okay. There is a UCLC Exhibit 34 and 29. I believe they are the same.
Correct. UCLC Exhibit 34 should not be on the list. It was never presented in that format. It was just something I had in my file.
Now, that leaves us with exhibits from the last meeting, and there is a motion to reconsider on file. And we would take up those exhibits at the next meeting, as well as the exhibits associated with Marcus Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just so everybody, if they're reading it, it accidentally, they shouldn't let me type anything. It accidentally says, Slagley, or excuse me, Megan Dassal Exhibit number 6 in one place. It's only Megan Dassal Exhibit 7, and then the exhibit for Mr. Slag.
All right. I've got 7:30. Why don't we take, why don't we take 10 minutes, take a bathroom break? We're going to work through a few other administrative things up here. We'll leave you guys to kind of look at what's going to happen for the rest of this meeting and then kind of our looking ahead. So, all right? So, 7:30. Why don't we try to do that?
When that appear testified, there were certain documents that were handed out. If the primary were handed out, they were not recognized as being exhibits presented to the CBA. It was not presented to the schools at that particular meeting. Highly became aware of the existence. Mr. Luken advised me at the next hearing, both of these gases, maybe exhibit 22 and 3, probably have been divided into two ways. As long as it's not the laser that is for Luken and Mr. Luken, he's not connected to the county. How does it look?
The specific ones, yeah, I don't have a firm, unfortunately, any of them. Very few, but there were two documents. Just, just, that's what I did. Number 1, I have no objection. 2 and 3 purport to be excerpts from some sort of manuals from two companies, Festus and Nordex. They're turbine manufacturers. Invin Energy is proposing to use either Festus or Nordex on this project, or proposing GE. We don't see the motions.
Mr. Luken, is your response to that?
Yeah. These are other manufacturers of wind turbines and statements they have about their safety and health. And we would ask that they be admitted. And if you want the whole, you know, we can put the whole safety manual in. We were hoping not to have to do that, but these are wind turbine manufacturers, and what they think about health and safety, I think, is relevant.
All right. I'm just going through very quickly the highlighted locations in these single-page documents. It appears that they're just general safety concerns. They may even possibly appear in some way, shape, or form in the GE manuals, possibly. So, I guess we'll just allow, we'll allow those. So, let's go ahead and accept. The county accepts Fair Exhibit number 1 as Tipton County, Indiana, Commissioner voted for wind farms, now lives with regrets. It's a letter written by Jane Harper. It was accepted into official public record in Tipton County, Indiana. The county will accept Fair Exhibit number 2 as an excerpt from Festus's manuals, highlighting 2.7 in case of runaway operation. And the county will accept Fair Exhibit number 3 as an excerpt from the Oax manual, safety manual, highlighting falling turbine parts.
Mr. Chairman, one thing that was brought to my attention at the break was that we admitted 0 Exhibits 1 through 9. I think there may have been some other 0 Exhibits from, I think it was Nelson's 0 or Moyn exhibit. So, if we could just label, for the record, these last Exhibits, which are actually labeled H0, if we could just, I assume those are the 9 Exhibits that you were admitting to evidence, Mr. Chairman.
That is correct. Thank you. So, let's allow these last 3 of that just taken in to be, do we want to call them?
No, I'm sorry. There's only one Fair. This is 0.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The ones from earlier, they were right before the break. It was just, it came to my attention during the break, and I probably shouldn't mention it early. I apologize. They're all actually labeled H0, 1 through 9 on the list.
All right. And we were going to transcript to include that correctly without one through all. Each one of them is separate, the previous years.
Mr. Chairman, I think your statement is acceptable to us. We don't need to go through all of them.
All right. Very good. All right. All right. So, just bring everybody up to speed on scheduling and where our locations are going to be. And kind of what's going to happen. The 27th and the 29th are our next proposed meeting dates. They're scheduled to be here in this location, historic county courthouse, historic courthouse at 6:30. For those, what we'll do, probably first thing on the 27th, we have two motions in front of us. The Marcus Mayor testimony, and then there's a motion to reconsider some testimony given by Megan Dassal and Mr. John Schleil. We'll take those up first thing. And then we'll go ahead and start with our rebuttal and surrebuttal. At that point in time, we're working diligently through the procedural hearings associated with that. It's going to be very strict rules that we're going to have to comply with. You're going to have to, both, all sides involved. We'll have very stringent guidelines to follow. We're going to try to come up with reasonable time expectations for everyone involved in that. We're going to also work through the list of those individuals that have the opportunity to provide rebuttals or rebuttal. So, we're sorting that out, whether, how it works out, whether it's everybody that's testified, whether it's everybody that's testified that's not represented by Mr. Luken. They're legally sorting that out. So, to have a clear and concise answer for you this evening, I don't have it. Okay. So, but I will, with certainty, I will spell that out for everyone before we start, along with the timeline, so that we all know how it's going to shake out. Okay? After we go through the rebuttal and surrebuttal, there will be opportunities for closing statements. I can say with certainty that there will be time limits. I expect the time limits on that to be around 2 minutes for those individuals wanting to make a closing statement. And in order to make a closing statement, you've had to previously testify. That's testify. That's not question someone. That's testify. So, you were sworn in, the whole procedure. And additionally, not be represented by counsel. So, you represented yourself up here, and you, and you were not on the list of Mr. Luken's. All right. So, I think we get to have a real short evening tonight.
Steve, name is the chairman?
Yeah.
Amber Seaberson. I just took a quick review of the county website when my presentation was posted. I understand that one of my supporting documentation is posted, and I am going to, I'm going to guess about it because I presented it on USB drive, but my presentation does not have that. And when I, it says, no information found. So, there, my presentation is not on the website. And likewise, Nelson's, excuse me, Nelson's presentation isn't there either. It doesn't even have that. So, I just wanted to make sure your attention, so you're being able to listen for testimony about our exhibits. Please check on that. Thank you.
Okay. To your first point, we'll work on it as far as trying to get the hyromantic work in. There might be a security issue where they don't want hyromantic out of the county's side. So, I can't promise you that's ever. The next thing is, is the 0 Exhibits we're just accepting this evening. So...
Does that include Nelson's 0 from February 9?
Okay. Excuse me. Okay. We'll work on that. All right. Sorry. Anybody else with just procedural questions?
For us novices, what is surrebuttal? We don't know what it is.
Mr. Blaken.
Regardless is, where the advocate in this situation had an opportunity to present evidence indicating why the evidence submitted by UCLC and the other people was incorrect or erroneous. And surrebuttal, your chances is the same way. There is reason why.
You mean, you mean, sir is the people out, as you want? Okay.
How long does that go on?
What?
How long does that go on?
If you're represented by attorney, your attorney will do this.
We'll do that. Okay.
Does that help everybody in the audience a little bit with surrebuttal?
Do we, so the surrebuttal part, like, next time we meet, would just be Invin Energy? And then would you question them? Or how's that, like, the detail of that? Like, are they bringing witnesses back?
Yes. Witnesses are, the intention is witnesses will come back to further validate their their position, their reasoning, their statements. And then, that possibly could open up a small line of questioning. And know that that's gonna be a very concise line of questions. It's not gonna get off on a tangent, it's gonna be very, I mean, a few times I interrupted individuals when they got, come on, plan on me interrupting a lot. And, because we have to keep it very concise to what they're here to rebuttal. Okay, so, it's not gonna turn into a lengthy chain of questions. All right?
I was just advised that this room of the hearing on April 29th, this room will not be available till 6 o'clock.
27.
What?
27.
I'm sorry, 27. This room will not be open, there's something else going on, so the room won't be available till 6 o'clock. I just wanted to come over here.
Oh.
So, so you just can't get in before 6?
Can't get in before 6.
Okay, for a meeting at 6:30, individuals will be able to come into the, to the, to the room, following meeting at 6, whatever's in here, until 6, until 6 o'clock. So, it shouldn't, shouldn't be a huge inconvenience or infringement to anybody. Okay. All right, that's everything I've got on the list, is that everything? You've got Mr. Blakeney? Mr. Griffin, have you got anything to add as far as rebuttal, surrebuttal? Is there anything that we're missing that we wanna spell out? For those in the audience, the surrebuttal of rebuttal, we have done it, but it's never been, we never had the, in previous hearings, we haven't had the expectation that it's gonna be as lengthy or as, as big as this one possibly could be. So, that's why I'm honest with you guys, and I wanna tell you the right information and not mislead you, so, that's why I'm kind of allowing counsel to further explain this better. So, with that...
I'm working with Mr. Blakeney, and I'm putting together the rules that he suggests.
Okay, okay.
If I may, the one thing that's, Mr. Blazer and I have talked about, I think it's been put on the record, but just to make it clear again, is that Mr. Hankard, we forego, we forego questioning of him when he came back the second time, and we were gonna broaden that scope of the sur, of the questions on rebuttal of Mr. Hankard, only so that we're dealing with that. That's something that Mr. Blazer and I previously agreed to, because, so we didn't bring Hankard back 3 times or 4 times, whatever it was, so...
That's correct. Okay, and so as, and so as we allow the open questioning of Mr. Hankard in rebuttal, surrebuttal, to fairly give everyone, we will allow the same open questioning to all those in the audience as well, are you guys?
Obviously, with respect to what he discusses, not with everything he's ever discussed, because...
All right, yeah.
The, the plan is, our rebuttal for Mr. Hankard will be focused on some limited issues. Phil, Mr. Lukaham, I'm assuming will be asking questions about those, and some additional ones regarding some matters that he didn't have an opportunity to ask previously. That doesn't, from our perspective, open up questioning to everything that's, that came from Hankard, as well as prior appearances in this proceeding. It's limited to what happens when he testifies.
Oh, okay. Is he gonna be available the 27th?
I believe, I believe he is.
Okay, so, let's, let's just do this different. Let's not start rebuttal, let's, let's allow Hankard to come, let's get any questions aired out that we have, that's audience, that's anybody else. We're gonna get those, and then we'll allow you to start your rebuttal.
That's fine.
Okay, that way we have a formal break in this, that we're not, because I want your time to certainly get out of the, in questions that we may have.
That's very fair. The only thing, I just, and I told Phil that I, and I'll do the same with the time in the gym, because we did find out today that we weren't going Thursday. I have to make some phone calls tomorrow morning to shuffle some people around, so, I'm fairly certain that Hankard will be here Monday, but I just need to reconfirm that.
All right, very good.
And I'll, I'll let the attorneys know as soon as I confirm that.
Okay. Chuck, is there anything that you had procedurally, or anything that you wanted to discuss? No? Okay, a couple more things, and then we'll...
I have an affidavit signed by David Rautman. Is my understanding that it is appropriate for me to hand out copies to the CBA? I've done so before.
Actually, I thought we had to, we had agreed that that would go in, in lieu of rebuttal testimony from Mr. Rautman.
Right, and I just wanna make sure that's the case.
I have no objection to it being handed out, I think it should be appropriately put in at the rebuttal stage, but being handed out to the board at this point, I have no problem.
That's my question, okay, I'll do that. And then, I have a report, those are the exhibit 312, from Lincoln and Bruce, I have not handed out to the board yet, is it appropriate for me to hand out to the board this time, so they have it in advance for the next hearing date?
Yes.
Thank you.
They already have 311, which was his other report.
All right, so you're gonna hand, you're gonna give us 312, are you gonna end the affidavit? Okay. All right, so, just so that everyone's clear, that, what that allows Mr. Rautman to testify via this affidavit in lieu of appearing, there's some very specific, very little, for, 3 things that he's actually adding to his test, or clarifying in his testimony, has to do with some links of relevance and different things, aggregate-based courses. All right, so, we'll take that. All right. 27th, 6:30 here, remember, don't come super early, can't get into this space. Oh, we got one more?
I'm sorry.
Procedural question?
Yes.
All right.
So, are, during the rebuttal or surrebuttal, are, is new evidence allowed, exhibits to be entered, or is that ended? And like, when Hankard comes, are new exhibits, are we at a point where exhibits are no longer allowed, or are they still allowed, are they allowed at a certain point? That's my first question. And then, my second one is the Patrick Engineering Sound Study and Heat Conditioning Studies, when do those get presented? I thought the county was gonna present those at some point?
We'll present those on the table.
Okay, and then there will be questioning then, or how's that work? Are they like any other witness?
All right, so, I went on here, so Patrick Engineering Study, we're gonna get on the 27th. I would imagine, just that, and this has happened previously, we've, we've gotten the study from Patrick Engineering from previous projects, we've had some time to take a look at it, and to refer to questions from it, that he did come in to talk to us. So, that'll be in open forum, open session questioning. Your first question, you're gonna have to, it was activated. Counsel, why don't you guys take this current?
There will be an opportunity for the service, and then there won't be new exhibits again, you'll be indicating why you think the testimony of the witnesses presented by the applicant will be incorrect. So, why, what was the question on, why?
I guess my question is more like, will Inverge's witnesses be presenting new evidence that goes into the exhibits on the website? Again, is that, is this like a repeat?
They'll, they'll be responding to the evidence listed by the opposition.
Okay, so they're gonna be introducing new?
That may entail some additional material to be published. What was brought in?
All I, the best I can say is that we'll just have to deal with it, we're all on.
All right, I know that it wasn't 100% concise as we spell out the rules, that's why we're sorting through the rules as well. And we wanna, we wanna air these things out so that we can, I can say, rule number 7, no, you're gonna do this, not a lot. So, I have one other question, maybe procedural, out there?
Maybe to avoid confusion, just once we get Mr. Blakeney to have the rules and procedures in place, the locals will be having it outside, so these folks can see those, so they have an idea of what the procedures will be.
If we're gonna go into time, yes.
Otherwise, let's be, if you have to, we can see it in the other time, if you still have an idea to what to know.
I understand, I understand what you're suggesting.
I think, I think to that, and to the, having been prepared previously, I don't know, I think that in the, in the, that would be great, but at the same time, I think, as the board, we need to all agree to that as well. So, there may be some things on this that I, that he, these rules that I may not agree with, we may have to change as well, or maybe...
Do you know, do you know what the rules are?
I understand, and that is the importance of, why I said on the 27th, we're gonna spell them out, we're gonna explain them, we're gonna get everybody on the same page. I would hope that Mr. Blazer, as we're explaining, they're gonna have, maybe discuss it, and if I decide to change something, he can somewhat vary his rebuttal to make those changes as he goes. I can't imagine there's gonna be anything major. And then, we'll kind of see how everybody else, how he does it, and then we can work backwards from there, all right? All right. With that, I need a motion to recess. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, did I have another question?
Yes. Well, I am sure, will Mr. Parsick be back? Is he one of the party back again?
Parsick, will he be back?
Parsick, will Parsick be back for rebuttal?
Yes.
The answer is yes.
Very little.
All right, motion to recess. This is the motions. And a second, a second.